Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council meeting for Tuesday, July the 17th, 2012, to order. Roll call.
Uh, Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Paul Stier?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
And Mayor Robinson?
Yep. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everyone. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Still move.
Second.
Motion by Merrell, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Here's. Brings us to item five this evening, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Rosie, don't you have a flower you want to talk about? Nothing? No? All right. All right.
Okay, seeing as no one wants to address the council this evening, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item six. The items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending July the 13th, 2012. Item B is the meeting minutes for the July 3rd, 2012 city council meeting. Item C is the application for payment number eight for the 2011 Westside Improvement Projects. Item D, Resolution 1973, approving final plat, Business Park North Six replat. Item E, introduction and first reading of ordinance 321, amended ordinance 315, and interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting certain development in the South Trunk Highway 52 corridor. Item F, approved quick stop of Cannon Falls to sell tobacco products. And item G, the banner request. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
I'd like to, uh, G. Just a little more information.
Okay, we'll put that as C. Any other items? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item G, which will become item seven C for council business.
Still move.
I'll second that.
Motion by Merrell, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? That moves us to council business tonight. Which, the first thing being, the electronic sign zoning code change request.
Um, we had a local business approach to the city about wanting to place a sign at their business, and the sign would be, you know, I guess, kind of your new electric sign that, you know, pictures information, um, it would advertise, you know, sales going on, events coming up, um, you know, all those sort of things. So it'd be, you know, a full color electronic sign. Currently, as included in the packet, the city code does not allow, um, motion signs, flashing signs, except for, like, banks, and they have the time and temperature sort of signs. So, uh, the request from the business owner was, well, other cities allow, you know, these sort of signs, why can't we have one? So, it's brought to the council, you know, it's sort of, I think, like, last meeting we talked about the rear entrance for the outdoor seating code, something maybe sort of similar to that. The assumption that staff has is when the zoning code was put together at that time, it was the fact that the, the council and the planning commission didn't want to see these sort of flashing, you know, kind of signs around town. Usually when they're not allowed is because, you know, this felt that it's distracting, it, um, you know, it, well, you know, if it doesn't look nice, whatever. But, you know, there, there are often reasons why cities don't allow those sort of signs. So, I said I'd bring it to the council to see if the council wants to move forward or not with allowing, changing the code to allow the signs, or just keep things as is.
Well, I did notice, as I was reading, um, you know, you can't have motion signs and flashing signs, except time and temperature signs and barber poles. I know one of the banks in town does do something other than time and temperature, so...
As with most of our signs and things like that, we don't enforce unless there's a complaint. Uh, but, uh, yeah, and that sign possibly could have been placed before the code went into effect.
It's possible.
I don't know that answer as well. That's what we kind of, we have talked about the fact that there's probably a noncompliant sign, and the thought would be is that it went into place before this code was adopted in 2007, '06.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know.
Well, is, is this a single request by a single business, right? And Dave, has any other businesses expressed interest in doing anything like this, or not?
I haven't had any other business come and talk to me specifically about this kind of sign. Um, I guess the discussion Aaron and I had is, if we have one property owner requesting it, we can either look at it as a single request based on the proposal of the property owner, or alternatively, go back and look at the full code, because I would expect if we approve one, that we're gonna have others that will soon follow after asking this consent.
So we have an option whether we approve this one as a unique, uh, uh, event here in the city, a, a unique sign for one business, or we can change the entire code? Is there, is that an option, or?
Yeah, I mean, we would have to look at it as some sort of variance, or interim use, or something like that, to, to allow it for, for one location, but, like Dave said, if we do it for one, we're going to have other businesses interested in doing it. So, the thought would be is if we're gonna do it, um, let, you know, Dave and I work with the code to, you know, address, you know, where we'd allow it, go through the planning commission, let the planning commission have input on, um, you know, where would they think these signs would be appropriate, what zoning districts, um, you know, those sort of things. So, it would be kind of a process to do this, but...
So they should go to the planning commission first with a request?
Well, the thought is, is before we brought to the planning commission, we wanted to make sure that there's any sort of council support at all for even seeing a change happen. If the council doesn't support seeing a change, it doesn't, it didn't pay to run it through the planning commission first, have it come this direction. We thought we'd start with the council. The council thought that it was something at least worth pursuing. It would go to the planning commission with some draft language we had put together. Planning commission could review it, we'd hold a public hearing on it to, you know, get input from citizens, if there was any, and then, from there, it would be coming back to the council, um, ordinance, so two readings, those sort of things.
Yeah, and in general, I don't have a problem, I just don't want to become Vegas.
We don't need to become Vegas, there's enough light pollution out there as it is.
I don't think we're in danger yet, but, I mean, it's a good point, but...
You know.
Enough of these flashing lines, though, we could, signs we could shut off the city's streetlights.
There you go.
Save money there, yes. Good thought, Merrell.
So are these, right now, the one that ask, is gonna be on the outside of the building, inside, what?
Yeah, it would, it would be, and I actually think this one might be more of a portable sort of sign, but it would be situated on the outside of their building, kind of like on the edge of their parking lot.
Near the road, actually, yeah.
Yep. But, you know, the, when you move this forward, what you'd probably see more often are the, um, you know, the ones that are, you know, mounted, either, you know, kind of on the, on a, you know, freestanding at the front of a building, um, or gas stations will often have them kind of up on their, their sign area, you know, advertising their deals, and, you know, things like that. So, that will, what we'd be looking at, and when we've discussed it, you know, we, we also want to make sure that if we do allow it, we'd probably limit it to, say, like, the, um, you know, highway business district, or, you know, something like that, so we, we don't see it popping up in other commercial areas where maybe it's not as appropriate, um, you know, especially like the downtown area. Although I think we could easily exclude it from the downtown area now with our historic zoning overlay, but, just to be very clear about it, I think we would probably want to look at limiting it to just certain zoning districts where it seems to make sense where a sign like this wouldn't have a negative impact, say, on nearby houses, because it's flashing at night, and, you know, those sort of things.
All right. Well, I've seen a little problem with moving it on to the next step, and at least look at it and have planning commission work out. Sure, sure. I don't see any problem. Work out some reasonable...
Take a look at it and see where it's at.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to, uh, have the city move forward, move it on to planning commission, uh, for further study, and then come back to us.
I'll second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Merrell, to, uh, move the sign request to the next step, to the planning commission, hold a public hearing before we even look at changing the code. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Brings us to item seven B, which is the preliminary budget work session for the 2013 budget.
Yep, it's, uh, kind of that time again. Just as far as, kind of a general overview, as always, we have to adopt, um, the preliminary budget, um, in September, early September, we generally do it our first meeting, um, in September, and then we have, uh, you know, basically, until our first meeting in December, uh, to adopt the final budget. So, what we'd be looking at here is just an initial work session to review the preliminary budget, looking at numbers that the department heads and staff put together, taking a look at where we would stand, getting any council input onto it, you know, kind of explaining, maybe, I don't know yet, we haven't done it, but, we're working on it, but, explaining any, you know, issues that we see in the budget, those sort of things, and then, um, deciding if it's good enough to move forward for adoption as a preliminary, um, or if we need to have another work session, um, in August to kind of refine it before we adopt the preliminary. Uh, as always, the preliminary budget, um, once it's adopted, we can always go lower, but we can never go higher, uh, when we adopt the final.
Well, I was, I was, as I thought about this, I was thinking, well, our next meeting is on the 7th of August, we could do it after the meeting, and if we need a second one after our second meeting in August, because we're all gonna be here anyhow. Right.
Yep.
That'll work.
So we will, uh, hold a work session on the 7th. I don't think we need a motion for that, do we?
That'll be after a council meeting. Don't want to be rushed.
That moves us to item seven C, the banner request.
Yep, and actually, I apologize, this was supposed to be on the regular agenda. When we did the amended agenda today, I was in the FEMA meeting, and then when I got out, it was already done, and, eh, I messed it up. I figured if somebody didn't pull it, I'd mention it, but, I kind of figured somebody would. This has come about, um, at the chamber breakfast, um, last week. The Parks and Trails Council was here to present the, uh, proposal for the trail connection from the Cannon Valley Trail in Cannon Falls out to Lake Billsby, which would connect to the new bridge, that will connect then to Dakota Side, uh, the Billsby Park. As part of that, um, the director came down, when he came down, he saw the Wine and Art Festival banner on our city sign, um, and he's been down before to meet with staff and negotiate land stuff and, and work on the project, he had never seen a sign there before, so, he just missed it, timing wise, with the art festival. So, he, um, had sent this request in yesterday, asking if they could put up a similar banner to the Wine and Art Festival on the city entrance signs, promoting the fundraiser that they'll be doing for this trail extension. So, as I mentioned in the memo, you know, obviously, the city and the chamber and the county and all involved support this trail extension. It would be very good for the city to, to get those campers from the Dakota County side to be able to, you know, ride bike into Cannon Falls, and, you know, and those sort of things. But, at the same time, we, when we first approved the banner for the Wine and Art Festival, it, the council did kind of say it's a one-time thing for this event, since it's a new event, um, you know, it's good for the city, we really want to promote it, um, get people in town, um, but we haven't allowed any other banners up there since. I don't think we've had any other requests, as far as I know, to, to place a banner for an event on there, but, you know, at the same time, if we start opening up to more events, I'm sure we will start getting potentially more requests for other things that are going on, to, to put banners there, so, well, that's why we wanted to bring it to the council, decide if you, if you're open to this, and if you want to bring it up and, and take a look at it or not.
The event's not even gonna be held in the city, it's down in Welch.
Yeah, it is in Welch.
So you mean the banner out on 52, on that sign?
Yeah, there's, on both the entrance signs, there's a banner that kind of runs underneath the arch city of Cannon Falls, um, that, this, that just says, I think, Cannon Falls Wine and Art Festival and the date on it. And they first did that last year.
Okay, so, so they would want to do a banner like that out there for, what, a month or a week?
Um, they would probably put it up, um, you know, the event's August 11th, so, it would go up once the art, Wine and Art Festival's over, so it would be a little less than a month, probably about three weeks, I think, because the Wine and Art Festival is...
It wouldn't, it wouldn't even be quite, this is what the, August, oh, about two and a half weeks?
Yeah, about two and a half weeks. It would, it would be up.
And is...
Who's gonna be next, though? Who goes, I mean, if we start doing this, I mean, we're gonna start having everybody and their, you know, brother wanting to put banners on our Welcome to Cannon Falls signs, and, you know, eventually it's gonna look trashy, and, you know, every time, and if somebody wants to have a garage sale, they're gonna want to put a sign up there, you know, so, uh, you know, let's think about it before we, we start doing that all the time.
Once you, you do something like this, and it just keeps snowballing, then you turn around and you spend $3,000 writing the laws to try to regulate it, and it just gets complicated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, uh, it's already complicated, because we allowed the winery to do it, and, and the new bike trail is probably a great cause, too, so, um, I mean, that is something really special if that all eventually goes through. So, yeah, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I agree with you, Robbie, is, is then the next thing you know, somebody wants to drive in a steel post and hang another one on each wing. It just gets complicated.
Well, the question I think might be is, is the event in question gonna ultimately benefit the city of Cannon Falls versus an individual or a business? If it, if it helps the city, probably not so bad. We should probably get some guidelines in place, if it's for someone, for a garage sale or the ABC company, no, you don't want to do that. But, I don't know, we've already opened the barn door here.
We can, we can close the barn door, though, too. I mean, at the same time, I mean, those things don't look that good on those signs out there. I mean, and, you know...
But, but if we do, uh, stop it, then we have to stop the winery, or the Wine and Art Festival.
Well, I mean, we have to do what we gotta do, I mean...
You know, you can't, you can't have it both ways.
Right.
And I mean, you got the, you got the fair, you got some, you could end up with a, some kind of a big cancer fund drive that, uh, this is, I, I don't know how to just say no to it, but I don't know how to say yes, either, you know?
I'm wondering if it's something we should work on for an ordinance, a long-term solution, so that we can set guidelines if we want to allow anything in the future.
I wonder if Dave could run through the planning commission and just get some input on it.
Yeah, that would fall under the sign ordinance.
Yeah.
But, of course, they're under, I mean, I, I feel bad, because they, they come in here just to, you know, two, three weeks out, and want, it's, you know, at least the Wine and Art Festival, they had given us, they had given us pretty good warning, or advanced knowledge, so... So I think there's some sort of consensus that will, they're not, we're not exactly for it, right?
Well, I mean, we can, we'll, we'll take a, a motion either way, I mean...
Well, is he gonna make a motion?
Anybody making a motion?
Oh, man. Are we gonna table it, then? Well, if you table it, it's saying no. Well, then, that's, that's what the consensus seems to be, you don't seem to be too enthusiastic for it, either you're for it or against it.
See, if you table it, it'll, and then send it over to the planning, basically, and let them really look into it.
Right, but it won't help these folks for this year.
No, no.
No, it won't. Or for, well, this is a one-time event.
Yeah, because I'm in the planning commission's meeting next month, after it's over with.
Right.
Yeah, and I guess I just wonder what would be wrong with a one-time event till we get this all figured out? What would be wrong with letting them do that?
Well, I, I don't know if it's necessarily a matter, you know, right or wrong with doing it, but, I, I think it's, the concern that could come up is then...
Could oppress...
You're gonna have another one-time event, and potentially another one, and, you know, it, it is an issue where, do we want to open up that sign for continued use or not? And I know we talked about, do we have guidelines or not? We can have the planning commission take a look and, and discuss it, um, try to work that out. It won't be easy, um, you know, I, I think, as far as, you know, picking who gets to put something up there and who doesn't, you know, you know, depending on guidelines, does it benefit the city? Well, that's such a broad definition, and many things could technically benefit the city, um, you know, is it only nonprofits, is it only fundraisers for disease, you know, it, it's a difficult thing to, to set guidelines around something like that, which is why, for the most part, legally, for the city to regulate signs, and I'm not talking about signs in their own property, because we have more control on what goes on that, but just signs in general, we can't regulate content. If a sign is allowed per the zoning code, if it meets the, the, say, the size requirements, the number requirements, whatever, we can't regulate the content. The sign is what it is. People can basically put up a sign, if it meets the zoning requirements, that, you know, so for us to pick and choose, we can, because we own the site, and, and that, we have, we have that ability then to pick what we allow, but at the same time, it's difficult then to set guidelines that are clear.
Well, my biggest concern, Aaron, is, is that somebody goes out there, um, maybe makes the sign themselves, doesn't tie it down good, it, you know, good windy day, goes across the highway, somebody has an accident. I'm more concerned about the liability of this thing.
Right.
Where that enters in, uh, to this, too.
Well, it would be the city's liability. I mean, we own the site, we allow it to happen, so it's, it's our responsibility, if somebody gets hurt putting a sign up, or if, you know, what are the odds of that happening? Who knows? But if something would occur, it, it would be the city that would have responsibility. It's our site.
Then I would say no. Well, I'm, I'm gonna have to go along with Phil to the extent that, uh, if at some point, planning commission can come up with a way to work this out, is, we should have these signs strictly for what benefits the city and the city only. And it should be a city decision about each sign, each one? Right, this is gonna benefit the city, obviously, but it's benefiting a whole big area. But you can spread this out, a business can say, yeah, I'm in the city, and it, it benefits me, it benefits the whole city, and you can do that by extrapolation, that if it helps me, it helps the whole city. I mean, it gets into something else, a lot of others think, complicated things. I personally don't want to see it, and I would say no, and I'd say no against, to the, um, to the Wine and Arts thing, too, until we figure out a long-term solution at, uh, an ordinance to it. That's what I would say.
Rosie'd like to speak.
Rosie would speak, yes, please, Rosie.
And just a thought, because I'm not associated with either of those groups. My thought is that, well, first, I don't like signs, but, the other thing is, when you see that, if it's a well-done sign, it's gonna show vibrancy for the city. These things are going on in this town. You are paying for a billboard that's rather stationary, I finally saw it, okay, and this is right near town, things are going on here, I think it could, if it's well-done, it's, it's a publicity...
Well, I'm not arguing that, Rosie, but I'm saying a long-term solution in the form of an ordinance that would detail exactly what the, the concerns that, uh, Aaron was bringing up, and would meet all those concerns, would be better than to just do a slapdash, sign-by-sign thing going on.
Absolutely, I just don't want you to squash a potential publicity...
I don't want to squash the vibrancy of Cannon Falls, believe me.
I mean, we're, we're not doing that, I mean, but, I mean, this isn't, like I said, it's not even gonna be held in Cannon Falls, it's down in Welch Village. I mean, so, I mean, we're looking at, we don't even know what the sign's gonna look like. I mean, we have no clue.
If nobody makes a motion, then it's not gonna be done, that's all.
Nope, we can sort of take a look at it internally, and if we start to maybe figure something out, we can have the planning commission talk about it, and...
Yeah, I'd like to see that, have the planning commission look, look at that ordinance a little more.
So there's no specific proposal in terms of what it would look like, or what it would say?
Uh-uh.
Not yet.
I think it would be basically, you know, whatever the title is, trail fundraiser, the date, you know, so...
I'm pretty familiar with what, uh, I wasn't definitely asking, I'm pretty familiar with what it is that they're trying to, in terms of raising money out there. We should probably talk about that, and what your regards to the sign, and what's being proposed by them.
Yeah, because fundraisers even raise a question about, is that appropriate?
Yeah.
You open it up, and it's difficult to judge what's appropriate.
Open up Pandora's box when we start allowing everything to happen like that, I mean...
And hopefully, in the, in the meantime, between now and next year's Wine and Art Festival, we have something in place, one way or another, otherwise, we're gonna have to tell them in future years.
So we're gonna table this, or... Or are we gonna make a motion to kill it for, for this time?
I make a motion, we table this. And I'll second that.
A motion to table? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this will be tabled until, uh, the planning commission and some other comments can be taken for it. Okay, that brings us to reports. Mr. Maroney?
Just to say, it is item number F of the consent agenda, you can see that the quick stop development is proceeding, the economic development authority did close their loan at the end of June, and we did receive the applications on building, four building permits on the Thomas', for the roof reconstruction, uh, this week, so, they're going full steam ahead, and picking on a pretty exciting project, but they've got some work, work out ahead. We got the EDA loan closed, the financing's all in order, so...
Yeah, good job, thanks.
Chief?
Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. We're through the, um, fair, um, and headed towards the Cannon Cruisers event, and Fireman's Dance. That will be August 3rd.
Right.
Yeah, and, uh, Cannon Cruisers are changing their route this year, they're gonna go out 24 to 19, out around Billsby, and then back into town, uh, coming in Ninth Street, uh, to the city parking lot. So I don't think it's gonna be, uh, very disruptive for our residents, but I did want them to, to be aware of the route. We will be stopping traffic momentarily at, uh, 24, where they come on by Napa, and at the, uh, the semaphores at 19 and 20, so that, uh, we can just get all the, uh, the vehicles through that are in that procession. The other thing I wanted to mention was, in the last month, since the flooding, I've received, uh, four letters, uh, from residents, uh, thanking our officers, and I just wanted to, I won't go into the details, because some of them are, are kind of personal letters, but, uh, you know, Officer Sutton Brown, uh, received, uh, two of them. One was for, uh, his actions in, uh, helping people with, uh, the flooding that they were experiencing. Uh, another one was from a, a family that was having some, uh, pretty serious, uh, internal issues, and, uh, Steve took the time to, uh, work with them and, and try to get those as resolved as best he could. Another one was from, uh, a resident that, uh, was thanking, uh, Joe Berg, uh, for his actions during the flooding, and the final one was for, uh, actions by Officer Dave Turbeast in, uh, rescuing the, uh, the resident from a large snake, uh, that was, uh, that invaded their yard. Uh, in graphic detail, of how we rescued them. But, uh, you know, just, uh, everyday actions by the officers, you know, for, for them, you know, they've all seen these, uh, you know, they just, all, one of them, to, to a T, has said basically, you know, I was just doing one, my job. And I think that speaks volumes of, uh, the professionals we have here, uh, you know, they view it just as part of their job. But it's very nice when, uh, the public recognizes them, and even more so when they, they take the time to send an actual letter, as opposed to just an email or a phone call. When I get those, I know how much, uh, those officers' actions touched that, that individual. So I just wanted to make the council aware of it. That's all I have. Well, I will.
Especially on the snakes, I hate those, too.
They have been doing a good job. Merrell?
Now I know who to call when I see those big spiders. Because I can handle the snakes, I can't handle the spiders.
I, I can't guarantee Dave's performance on spiders, uh, but he, he has a proven track record with snakes.
Aaron?
No.
Merrell?
Nothing.
I was just gonna say, that new, uh, squad you guys got, that's, uh, that's a pretty slick rig. I like that, very usable.
Yep. So far, the, uh, the, the feedback from the, uh, the citizens was very positive, uh, from the officers as well. Uh, they really like the, uh, the fact that they can inter laterally, as opposed to climbing down, and then the, uh, the other thing that's a big one for them is the line of sight. Uh, the, if you've seen it in the, uh, parking lot or, or anywhere, uh, even with the laptop If you've seen it in the parking lot or anywhere, even with the laptop up, it doesn't break the line of sight. And that's a big change from the, from the Crown Vics, so we're real, real happy with that.
Bill?
Uh, nothing.
Leroy?
Uh, just a quick thing for Aaron. Was going to try to call you about this today, and then I got so busy, I wasn't able to, so... Nothing you have to address except for the building up there by O'Reilly's, just south of the Riley Building. Somebody had a temporary, one of these plastic canopy-type things for garden sales and stuff. And I don't, I don't have any problem with it outside of that. I don't see anybody there or anything happening. And I don't really see it staked down and stuff, and it concerns me with power lines there and stuff if you got a bad wind some day. So, I don't know what the ordinances are or something, but I think somebody should be monitoring that every day or something.
They were approved, I think, for the first time as an accessory use on that site last year, in the last two years, I mean, and their first year out there. So, it's a continuation, but we can certainly check into the construction.
I think the issue is they're just not using it, just sitting there.
And that'd be okay as long as the thing is anchored, but I'm sure it isn't anchored, you know? I don't know what the codes are on and stuff, but...
Yeah, we'll, we'll check.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Bill?
Aaron, have they talked to you about the library and the progress on it? Have they?
Right now, everything is on schedule. We had just a little delay with the heat a few weeks ago, but that didn't hold anything up for very long. And so, you know, everything's, everything's moving forward the way it should, no issue.
They are on schedule, though?
They are on schedule. They haven't run into anything unusual, so...
Well, I would like to add to that, Phil, you, did you get the email that the library committee?
I don't have a computer, so no.
Oh, the library committee is meeting Thursday evening here.
You mean the building committee?
Yeah, the building committee.
Thursday evening?
Yeah, here.
I thought Justin called you about that.
No.
I'll make sure that...
I can't remember what time, it's six, I think it's six o'clock.
I think it's six o'clock, yep.
Okay, thanks.
I'm going to, yeah.
Thursday, this, coming Thursday, right? This coming Thursday, Bill?
Yes, this Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I like the newsletter that the police department puts out, giving us a heads-up about what's going on, the incidents and everything. That's good. It reminds me of when I went to Rapid City a number of years ago, and in the city hall outside the police department, there was a big book, and you could turn the pages and see each neighborhood, the incidents, what happened, nature of the incident and everything. So, you could check on every neighborhood in the last couple of weeks, and they had sort of a diary of what was happening in the city. Your, is sort of like that, your, your newsletter about...
Yeah, you know, what we're, we're trying to do is, is not replicate the, you know, statistical information, per se, because, you know, the Beacon does a good job of putting that information out. What we're trying to do is just sort of highlight, you know, some of the other calls, the ones that may not get that much attention. But they're good information. It gives an idea of what's occurring. It's certainly not intended to be a full listing. We do kind of have that, that book concept on our webpage. We've got crime maps on there. You can click on that. It'll show you. You can select the types of crimes you're interested in. It'll show you where they're occurring within the city.
Mainly burglaries, but that's okay.
Yeah, well, and it's, it's just to the hundred block, so it's not going to show us, you know, the specifics of an individual house.
No, I know.
You know, the number of burglaries, you could click on that in the last thirty days, and it'll show you, you know, that type of information.
Yeah, I did click on a wider view of the state crime, city by city, about how, the different percentages of crimes in different cities and everything.
Yep.
That's interesting also.
Yep, and so, this is just a, meant to be another, another information, you know, that we can, we can put out to the public to help keep them informed and fill in some of the gaps in some, some of our existing areas. I'm quite excited about the potential that we have within the new city webs, web design. I'm going to be working with, with Mike on getting some more information available on there within the police department and utilizing our, our web presence and internet presence through Twitter and Facebook, especially as we go into the winter. They see that as another way for us to let residents know when we're going to be doing plowing, that it's going to result in, you know, tickets or, or toes. And anytime we can prevent those from happening is, is better than us having to, you know, actually write the tickets and tow the cars.
Right, no, it is good, it's good. Thank you.
And I don't have anything tonight. This time, the chair will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.